Mr. Johnson?
No.
Okay. Okay. Call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, March 4, 2019, 6:30 p.m. All members of the council are present, others includes James Johnson, Clark Treasurer, and Laura Dogen, our city manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of February 11, 2019. Entertain a motion.
So much.
A motion is made, is there a second to approve the minutes of February 11, 2019?
Second.
Making second. Anyone else in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. We have Ann Sherrill, about the budget and the report.
Yes.
Is this about the annual report and the budget?
Yes.
Would that come up under the informational?
I think so.
That would come up under the informational meeting.
Okay, and I will get a decent amount of time, otherwise I would like some time now and some time then.
I will give people time during the informational meeting to discuss questions. Yes.
And comments.
And comments, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Pam Lads?
Same thing.
Okay. Moving on, and nothing else, no one else signed up. The next item is the informational meeting, informational meeting about the annual meeting warning. And I will open the floor up.
So I have a few things to say about the report. One of them is, as per my partner Pam, who noticed that previously in the reports, we had information on the testing that's been done. So in previous reports, for instance, we had an annual test for arsenic, and we found out the results of the arsenic test. That's missing from this report. And so I would ask that in the future, number one, we do testing now, not only for, I know you do it for arsenic, but for some other substances that you've been doing. Council meeting. PFOAs in our drinking water, and that the annual report reflect from now on, as it used to do for arsenic. The citizens had signed, whether it's ballot. It's always been the rule. It is far more readable, this budget, than the budget we get as a proposal. When I look at that on the computer. That it's got to be various things, instead of having a specified amount of how much it is, like $500. It frequently said ampersand percent dash dash four three seven two six, which meant that I had to go somewhere else, to another page in the budget, and it was usually not obvious. How much of that thing, somewhere else, was this $500 that would be in the police budget? So in the future, I think that when we look at the budget, when you look at the budget, consider that you may want that other thing, that with the ampersands and the percentages in, that refers you somewhere else, but you may also want a copy of this, which gives you a clear view of, and they can decide whether or not to come based on that, and used by police, et cetera. Well, a much clearer view, anyway. The third thing, took last time, is something that people saw with regard to water, about half, and which I think Laura mentioned, with regard to appropriate, you could, that 200, that vote is null and void. These that we, the taxpayers, right now, as it's, for, let's say, vests and things, was actually, in the end, paid for by.
The $1,000 approval.
But there's $200,000 sitting there, that the wording for it was, that was being given back or returned to the taxpayer. I would ask the council to give me their view of the law on that, because one of the councilmen that says, this is how much money. Agenda item was on.
Others depended on what.
Do with it. Parentheses, vote after. Taking leachate.
Public comment.
Casella, take that $200,000 and use it in the budget, instead of the.
Thing, or how I should do it.
So it doesn't sound.
That is a legal available, but basically it's been warned. It does not have to be warned. But basically, vote did not have to be warned. Why not? And it does not have to be warned. The council, this is a meeting of the council, everybody, to conduct city. Made that, and also the issue, because the VOCT and the city. Says not to put that on the ballot. And we're not the only.
There's a section called health and will.
So it's nothing new, we're not earth shattering into. Just had an issue, where they had thousand percent.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, four hundred and fifty dollars, sixteen four, $16,400. We got something like $29,950. And this says it's.
Around here.
Is the new math.
Finding, anyway.
It says it's 43,950. So I'm just asking you to check your numbers.
Um. From Mont and Montpelier, they.
I also wanted to.
Meeting is for.
Just above that, the budget for 1718 for recreation was 476,000. The budget for 1920 is 579. And I think if you asked around, and if you heard people's questions the other day about the rec department, and the cutting of certain services in the rec department, you would not think that we needed $100,000 more for the rec department. We certainly haven't gotten $100,000 more service out of the rec department. Services have been cut. I think, at that point, I'll sit down and shut up.
For a couple of questions.
Do you want to go through the next set of questions?
One clarification.
Well, the reason for that is, is because if you go down to the line item that says.
Two different, two completely different funds. No, they are, they're completely different.
Right there, I know, and.
Thing that comes in, in grant money in the general fund budget, does not.
Their training budget? I try to take it from my.
Is fine. That is not the general fund, which is tax money. That is a fund, am I correct, Mr. Johnson? Maybe you can explain, am I explaining it okay?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure. It's separate funds. And so you don't co-mingle tax money into the enterprise fund.
Well, if you gave us back the $200,000, we could put it in the water fund, no problem.
No, you can't. It does not go to the water fund. I'm not going to explain it. It's two separate funds. Enterprise fund is collected from utility users. Users, the sewer user. Fund is collected by tax revenues. And so completely different funds. You don't move tax, you don't, you're not allowed to move taxpayers' monies into the enterprise fund. It's two completely different funds. And that's, that's that.
These are the.
Every budget shows a large increase, because we moved the expenses into every budget. Instead of having the personnel broken down on one page of, it got broken down to each department. And so that's why every department shows on the expense side, a large increase, is because we decided to move the personnel into each department, so you had a better.
Of unassigned that the council approved.
Saw the large increase in recreation. So that's, that explains that. I think that's, that's that. And as far as the page here, she is correct, Laura, there's a formula that didn't carry.
Constantly. I just saw that.
It's all. It might be that when I cut, I don't know, is it right in your spreadsheet? It might be when I cut and copied it from the spreadsheet into the book, something didn't carry through, because it gets emailed to me, and I highlight and copy it into the book, versus trying to type it all in by hand. So maybe that's the explanation for that formula there. So anything I could think of, and that's, you know, because that's what happens sometimes. If I made a mistake on that aspect, well, it's, because the cut and copying doesn't always spreadsheet to document. That's all I think I could think of there, unless you had a mistake in the formula.
It could be, I'm going to double check it, because the formula's showing right there. So I believe that's adding, where's Becky? Don't you see that formula? It looks to me like it's, that's N23, and if you double click on that column, you can see it surrounds that, those numbers right there.
It's 16 plus 3 plus, that doesn't equal 43. Isn't that weird?
I'm assuming that that's added.
Right, it is, but we've got N23 hidden.
If you click right there, you'll see.
Right.
Really confident that.
Be hidden, so it's. It's picking up a no number. So you might have cut something in that line item, and it picked it up. I can see it right there.
I'm not as worried about that $10,000 as I am about some of the other issues.
Well, no, but I just was curious to see that, and that's what I think happened there. Four fifty, these three are not added in. Right. Because recycling was another part, I think. See, recycling was moved down here. So that would go. I bet, yeah. That's what happened there. Okay, okay, so. Okay. I think that was.
I think that's everything.
That's everything? Okay. And then I had Pam Lads?
Okay, I was the backup officiating. Have a right on.
Oh. Well, no, informational meeting. They have questions.
You never know, so we were just covering our bases.
Oh, okay. The person being interviewed, yes?
Mr. Mayor, just a question from my girlfriend, Jason, from my story. You said you're not allowed to move money from the water fund into the city budget, vice versa?
Correct.
Is that the city charter, or is that the state?
It's a completely separate fund. Enterprise funds, maybe, Mr. Johnson, would you explain the reasoning? Enterprise funds is.
Are based on user fees only, not tax money. You can't co-mingle.
I guess I'm just wondering why not?
Because taxes, and one's collected.
Standard accounting practices?
That's right. You can't. Besides that, you know, I don't know what I can do.
Yeah, I actually wouldn't let you do it anyway.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions on the annual report? Yes, ma'am?
Regarding Article 6 in the budget for tomorrow, that'd be voted on. A figure was appropriated for the Masonic Lodge, and I'm curious to know how the Masonic Lodge contributes to the community, because I've never seen a lodge supported by taxpayer money before.
There's no one here from that organization to explain, but they ended up, they received enough signatures on a petition for a money article, so it has to be placed on the ballot, because they received enough signatures to place it. So I'm not sure myself, I'm not here, I don't know about the lodge, why they're requesting money.
They're identified as a charitable organization, but it's really a fraternal brotherhood, a fraternal order, that is privately joint. So I was wondering why it's taxpayer-supported, and no one here knows.
Taxpayers haven't supported it yet.
Pardon?
The taxpayers haven't supported it yet. You'll note it later tomorrow.
Is this the first time there's been money?
Oh, okay, thank you.
That aside of the voters, they haven't asked, they haven't asked for an appropriate.
But they're asking for it this year.
Yes. By right, they have a right to go out and get a petition, get the signatures, if it's a money issue, and if it's a money issue, it has to be placed on the ballot.
Does anybody know who she could contact?
Is there a contact with Masons, or do you know?
I know.
Okay, maybe.
I know, in the next couple of weeks. Mission. The Masonic Lodge has Vermont Cares, which is geared towards education, and I forget the exact dates, but it's coming up in the next two weeks. They are sponsoring a two-day training educators at the Alex Lodge regarding working with students that have mental health issues or drug abuse issues. They also are the, an anchor organization, if you will, for the Shriner's. To be a Shriner, you have to be a master mason. Support the Shriner's hospital.
Forgot, I tried to go up there, the Shriner's.
And the scholars.
That helps, yes.
I just had a question. If I remember correctly, in order to get appropriation onto the ballot, there was supposed to be a financial, and I don't see anything from them in here at all.
You don't can't hold them to it.
I remember a while, a few years back, that was a big.
We had a, the city has a policy, but you can't hold them to it, because they had to number signatures. Generally, generally organizations provide a financial.
Request that. You got the petition, the signature.
I thought.
Other questions? Yes.
I thought I was done, but I'm not. I backed another circle. And.
Page, please.
Oh, this is page, I'm on page 48.
Forty eighth, okay, thank you.
Back to, back to a, an issue that I've raised before. You know, for about six years under the form of NCRC, I think, we had a downtown organization that had no head, that, that did very little, to say the least. And we used to dispute whether or not they should get 20 or $30,000. Now we're up to 60, and I got notification recently, as most of us did, that again, we have no group, or Downtown Development, or whatever it's called. They got 30,000 for years without having a chief officer. Now they don't have one again. It took them about five years to get a chief officer. That other money just, I won't say it. Let's not, let's not let this $60,000 go to them, and then not have a new chief executive officer again, for another five years.
Anything else? Anyone have any other questions on any article? Yes.
I don't know if you can answer this one or not, but Article 17, the $15,000, does support for the promised community early care? That would be property taxes raised by property taxes, correct? And that would be in addition to state subsidies for childcare, and the education funds that go to the three and four-year-olds for preschool?
That was my interpretation of the article.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
What was the second part that you just said? Oh, the subsidies for three and four-year-olds for public preschool, they don't qualify for that, so that's an income source that doesn't exist for them? They do receive childcare subsidy qualified.
Yeah, we had a small report from them, which showed some, which showed their income. Didn't show any expenses, but the report we had from them was, they received $42,460 supplementary state funds, client payments and subsidies, $25,000 to $12,000, private donations, $87,25, I'm rounding.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then children and adult food program, $15,22, so that was their income side. We didn't get an expense side to see.
To see them in the red.
Well, to see them in the red, but it would be helpful to know what the money is being spent on, you know, just to, you know, to help, you know, that.
Do we know if this is for Newport children, or for any parent that needs, because they take children from all over. Is it for any parent, or for Newport children?
I believe they've committed to using that $15,000 just for Newport children.
That's what I was told when I asked the question, so. I did ask, when I saw that, I emailed. I mean, founder of James, Maryam, Maryam, and I think, yeah, they did commit, I believe they committed that it will be for Newport, Newport City kids. That was a question I had. Any other questions on the report, or any of the articles? That was the time to ask.
I don't know if this is an appropriate time to ask this question, but I kind of want to piggyback on what Ann just asked about the, the new Downtown Development Organization, and without a director now, as of Friday, does, is this, is it appropriate to ask if, do we have a direction for this group? We're going to start right off looking for somebody, do we, I mean, I realize this is all fresh, but.
I have no idea. I just, I got the announcement the same time everyone did on Friday, so I really do not know. Because we can't change the printed budget. Right.
So if I could just offer, I was going to bring this up under new business, but it seems appropriate to bring it up now. The Downtown Organization will be hosting a meeting next Thursday, the 14th, from 6 to 8, and it's a continuation of the. Going to announce under new business. 14. Yep. The 14th, 6th. Center, and we'll have that catered again, and it'll be very similar on the 22nd of October, and what we want to do is update everybody, and all the activities that the Downtown Organization has been up to, from October 22nd to March 14th, and I think it'll be a positive, exciting meeting. We're planning a large group discussion, small group discussion, and then a large group discussion. Opportunity to sign up for some exciting projects. So I think.
I'm looking around for hands. Did you have, are you looking like you had a question?
I have to turn away to see people.
Okay, no, oh, no, I just wanted to make sure, because I just tried to even make sure I don't miss anyone. Anything else, for anything on the, any of the articles, or anything? All right. Very good. We'll move on then. The next item, Kingdom Games, Kingdom Swim, large event request. Was the organizer going to be here for that?
No, I can answer any questions that they have. There's no funding, just a large event application.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure, I just.
Yeah, so.
Let me find my right page. Anyone have questions from the council on any of them? Go ahead, Mr. Chanel.
Just on the application, it says other vendors, perhaps, Eden Ice. When would you know for sure if they would be a vendor or not?
I don't know.
Because they would have to get a liquor license signed on.
And so the way that our large event application is put together, it requires that the organizers be responsible for that piece, and typically that's all supposed to come in before these types of things are approved, but he was requesting. Typically, that's all supposed to come in before these types of things are approved, but he was requesting that to happen now. There's also some insurance and stuff that we won't be paying until he's staying closer to the event. So this application isn't quite as complete as it could be, but it's also their eleventh annual.
Go ahead, one other question.
Nope, I did.
Is there a city contact person, like over there at Proudy Beach, for instance? Would you have Andy be a contact person in cases of emergency where they have to have something immediately?
Yeah, so we'll have staff on for sure. We staff the park seven days a week, so we keep these things on our radar and staff them appropriately. And someone's there in case they'll, or the organizers need something, and I believe the police is offering some coverage here too. So there's city involvement there.
The, I had a question. They're requesting support from Newport Police total of eleven hundred and twenty-five. Is that something that you are donating?
No, sir.
Is that something he will be reimbursing us for?
Yes, sir.
But that's to be paid in full. I interpreted it as said, support from the police to be paid, I interpreted, I guess I interpreted to be paid in full by us. That's the way I interpreted it.
No, Phil's, Phil's paying for that and for the.
He is paying. Okay, all right, I just, I guess I interpreted, my mistake on that. Okay. I know his events have started to draw more and more people, which is good. Hopefully, it's a warm day, warmer than the winter swim. Water for me has to be set. Eighty for you? Okay. So any other questions on the large event request? Then we would need a motion to approve it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion that we approve the request for the.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Made in second. Question on the motion. Then all those in favor, go ahead.
Dates? Are there dates for that?
July twenty-seventh.
Yep, July twenty-seventh, five AM to six PM. Five AM.
It sounds like our fest is starting to round out that weekend too, which is nice, so.
That's good.
That will be the off one this weekend.
Okay, good. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. O's, a's have it, motion carries. The next item is the Downtown Transportation Grant Application Authorization to Proceed. We have Public Works Director Tom Brenner here, and Laura, Laura can explain also.
This is a grant opportunity that we are recommending we pursue through the RCDI grant. And Mike Welch is here in spirit, but is on a class trip until tomorrow. And what we would like to do with this Downtown Transportation Grant, it's in the amount of a hundred thousand dollar. Award requiring a fifty-fifty match of. Of cash or in-kind. We believe we could make the in-kind through our labor and our equipment. The total grant is two hundred thousand dollars. The application is due March eleventh, two thousand nineteen. And what we'd like to do with these funds is, back in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, the city had two studies done. One is the Intersection Study that was done by StanTech and was adopted into. Waterfront and Downtown Master Plan. What we believe is well within our grasp is making improvements as recommended in those studies at this intersection of Field Ave, Main, and Second Street. As well as making improvements to the municipal lot. So if we're successful in this application, the funds are from. Agency of Commerce and Community Development. The timeframe is. It'd be filed on March eleventh. The award decision would be April twenty-seventh. Project, October twenty. Sooner if the grant is awarded, so we intend to have that conversation with our contacts at this grant. The project would have to be completed no later than October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, with a final report due a month later. We think the project, once it's begun, will take approximately six weeks to complete. I included a diagram that will show what the intention is, and again, this is taken right out of the Intersection Study and the Downtown, the Waterfront and Downtown Master Plan. We have a couple of issues at this intersection. One is that Field Ave is not in a perfect alignment with Second Street. So by making modifications and widening. Will also have the ability to improve the truck loading zone. And for those of you who have been downtown, when the trucks are loading the businesses on Main Street, they park right next to the library, and it's not a good situation. So by widening that, we think we can make that a better situation. We. See, those are highlighted on your document. And we intend to install rapid flashing, where's Tom? Rapid flashing beacons. Where we widen the curb in front of the library and in front of the intersection of Second Street. We also intend to make some improvements to our municipal parking lot. Part of it includes better coordination, so when people are pulling into Field Ave and they're turning into the parking lot, we will. Those two island line the curb right here on. Take that out. That's a very. To the parking lot, so by removing it. City will improve motor vehicle. All traffic will have to come in. Parking ingress and egress, that's going to be over here. This is our initial concept. As we get closer to implementation. Changes on this, we'll talk. To bring some. We were excited. Be a dramatic improvement and sets the stage moving forward for some of the other things that we really need to achieve out of the Waterfront and Downtown Master Plan. So the overall budget, we anticipate is two hundred thousand dollars. If we can get a grant for a hundred thousand dollars, then we've saved the taxpayer a hundred thousand dollars by doing this. And the other, as I mentioned, the other part of the. Through Public Works Labor and Equipment. So I'm, I'm, I would like to recommend and request that the board authorize moving forward with the application by signing the resolution and authorize the city manager to sign applicable documents.
Questions from council members? Mr. Shinet.
Why would you be losing all that parking space down in the parking area?
You're losing?
That's what it says. This is due to lot entrance closure.
Oh.
The gray area.
That gray area is in concept, and we've been talking about how not to lose those parking spaces. So one of the things that we don't want to lose handicap access or fifteen-minute parking there. Once that curb is closed off, you may lose one or two on the opposite side, closest to the Field Ave, because you may not have enough room to. Concept. At this point, we have a lot more work to do in terms of the. That we're likely to gain, and again, when we talk about losing spaces, we know how precious that is, and that's why it's been a topic of conversation. You will see that there is an addition of curb on Main Street where it says close off the entrance, and that would be called. There's a possibility that you'll gain one or two spaces there as well. One of the things that we also want to do is that parking spot by, from the fire hydrant up to Field Ave on that side, where we zoned it off for no parking, but in the wintertime, when the lines are covered with snow, people are still parking there. We'd like to extend the curb so that the view, as you're coming out Field Ave, is easier on the eye. That's a hard spot. We get a lot of commentary about that, so we'd really like to fix that. So we've got some options and some opportunity here.
Other questions?
I'd just like to say, you know, over the years, we've done so many traffic studies, and we've had so many recommendations, and we've never really moved forward on anything. And this is like. We're finally moving forward on one of the concepts.
Well, we have a very strong commitment for these studies that have been done since two thousand. We have a commitment to not. Now, some of those are long-term projects that we really have to do some very intense planning and, and fund strategies to make things happen. Our initial priority is right here because we think we can do. If we get the grant, fantastic. The next area that we intend to focus on is the intersection by the Waterfront Mall, moving into Garden. They will have an improvement very. Say soon. Every, you know, when you're talking major infrastructure. Of improving the walkability, the attractiveness of the city, that's why these things are so important.
That one spot down here, because it's so hard to see when you're coming out here to look down Main Street. By chance, it always. Car, but it always seems to be a truck, and you're trying to peek out, look down the street, so that'll be a huge improvement down. As you said, your next goal will be Garden Park and Waterfront. And we know the owner of the Waterfront Plaza is more than willing to work with the city on that aspect. And that's. Partnership there for that aspect.
Private Landar says they want to work with the city. You want to do your best to strike while the iron's hot, because that will be a very. Project.
He wants to deal with the railroad though.
He was more than willing to deal with the railroad, because he's already dealt with them. Little, I can say, yeah, he had to deal with their. Hedge fund company, and they went to, they, they, not quadrupled, it was more than quadrupling what they wanted to charge for the crossing. So he ended up having to get Senator Leahy involved in a. Company, had no concept. It went from, I don't know what he pays a year now, but it was like quadruple, phenomenal number. I mean, when he came and chatted with Laura and I about it, it was like, I almost fell over when I saw what that company was. That's why hedge fund company. Really look at the operation. They look at. Some reason. So he's more than willing to work with the railroad on that aspect.
Mr. Mayor, one more question. What is our current? For vehicles?
Parking area for what?
Maybe that would be a better question to ask Mr. Harrow. Have we changed? For our vehicles? Space.
What is a individual parking space? Oh, by twenty?
I think it was nine by twenty.
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, because on your diagram.
Eight foot wide.
Eight foot wouldn't work, because.
No.
It'd be taken out to it.
Eight foot wide here?
Mm-hmm.
No, that's, that's not a parking space. That's, this is, no, this is. Curb, see?
You're there keeping parking.
Right, but. Oh, you're right. Okay, you're right, along the street.
Or they're going to take all this out.
Now, that, what you're seeing there is currently cars are allowed to park on the side of Second Street that's next to the.
That is who you're saying.
Bacon Lot. They're gonna, they're gonna remove parking being allowed on that side and turn it over to the other side. Help in the street alignment?
So there will be no parking whatsoever on either side?
No, they'll be, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna.
Do a.
Right, they're gonna do a.
Okay, but it can be eight feet.
I don't know what it. Could be. Concept drawings. Know that Tom is. Of his work looking at this. Of diagrams and what happened.
That, that number, there's no. The rest of the parking lots, parking spaces are definitely wider than eight feet.
Thank you. I thought that was a curb. Questions? Then we would need a motion to approve the grant application.
So.
Motion's been made in a second. Seconded, discussion. Then all those in favor say aye. O's, a's have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, a few minutes ago, the city manager said the. Not a good situation. I think I know what she's alluding to, but.
Yep, so. Pull in on Field Ave, park. Street, right? That's where they're parking right along the side. And it's really hard for cars to get around there, and you certainly don't have enough room to have a vehicle. Two cars pass each other, so when you come. From Main Street to turn into Field Ave, you have to be very careful. And it's not the idea, it's not the safest thing for the trucks, it's not the safest thing for the drivers who are loading and unloading right. They leave, so they, they pull in, they do their business, you know, cars are driving around them, and then the trucks have to pull forward and find a way to back out, to come back around, and it's a little bit challenging.
Mr. Mayor, would any of the council members be one of the, here's her call, is there an extra one? Yeah, the application.
I won't be needing nine. Thank you, Mr. Shinet. Mr. Johnson, new business.
I've got one legal license application needs to be signed. This is one that's been going on for years, where the chief has not looked at it. No, can you only vote in new ones? This is not a new one, this has been going on for three years. About a year.
I'll keep the track, by the way.
Do you mean it's an established business?
Yeah, it's a board name.
Oh. Is this the beer and lime license or?
That's beer and lime.
This is beer and. Oh, so we don't see those. Okay. Do we have to vote on this?
Mr. Renewal of their license.
So I'll correct my statement. The chief looks at new ones or any one that we've had trouble.
Any, anything else, Mr. Johnson? All I got.
No, no business.
No new business? Any new business?
None, nothing.
I don't have anything, anything, any new business, any new business?
Just inviting folks to the March. Meeting, six to eight. Meeting, 6 to 8 at the Career Center. Hope folks can make that. Thank you.
The March 4th, that's a Thursday night?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on. Old business, oh, my friends. Old business, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Shavitt?
I just want to thank the Public Works for clearing out the sidewalks and the snowbanks. Makes it a little bit easier to get out of the car and into business. I know it was.
I'd just like to say, I know we came out a few days after, mentioned about Main Street, but we've picked. Constantly, we're picking tonight. We're picking roads that we've never, ever picked. Because we have so much snow. Wasn't picking on Main Street, but we got some.
Oh, nice. This is I, in the co-op observer for Newport, I've measured 114 inches of snow, and we normally only average around 75 to 80. As of this. Added it all up, it's 114 inches of snow. But that's how much I've measured. And March can be a heavy snow month too, if you think about it.
If you don't think we've picked enough snow, they don't. Recite this.
And of course, what makes it worse is when it rains too, and then goes from 30 degrees to 12 below zero. It just, it's been one of those winters that way too, and so.
The hall that they want.
This one. So, yeah, it's been a tough winter, but.
Yeah, very good.
Any other old business? New business? The only old business I have is I just want to say that it was between the swim, the rotary basketball tournament, the fishing tournament, and JP having 10,000 visitors. And all the people who were in Newport because just about every restaurant, I mean, every restaurant had waiting lines, even all the way up the Derby Road. And so it's good to see that activity on a cold winter weekend. So I was pleased to see that. Any old business? Did you stay warm during the swim?
I did. I stayed out. This one would be for Tom. The street light on.